And welcome to the regular meeting of the Temple City City Council, December 20th. May we have the roll call, please?
Thank, yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavers?
Here.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Potem Man?
Here.
Mayor Sternquist?
Here. We move to item three, the invocation, and Pastor Darrell Kelty is here. Welcome Pastor Kelty from Community of Christ Church located at 5851 Temple City Boulevard, and he will provide the invocation this evening.
It's always good to be here, and I did thank you, and I wish everyone a happy holidays, whatever title you put on it. Let us pray. Our heavenly Creator, who is the source of all things good, we have your few children would come into your presence this day to ask your ever-present Spirit that you would be open our minds to that Spirit. We do so in all humility, that as we are about to conduct the business of the city of Temple City, we might do so for the betterment of the community. We would pray also that you might be with the staff, that they might have your wisdom to be with them to the tasks that may be done with diligence that make this city a place to be proud of. And finally, for all, we would pray for the audience here gathered, that they too may make through their individual and corporate efforts, leave this city a better place than they find it for future generations to come. The S3Ls can say, "Thank you," and amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We move to item five, ceremonial presentation. We have item A, Temple City Library Bookmark Contest winners, and Roberta Marquez. Welcome, Roberta. And she is the children's librarian, and she's going to give us an introduction on the bookmark contest.
I know you. I don't blame you.
Okay. Thank you for having me. I'm Roberta. I'm the children's librarian at Temple City, and every year, Temple City Library, as part of the County of Los Angeles Public Library, holds a bookmark design contest for students in kindergarten through 12th grades. To publicize the contest, we contact all the local schools, send them information, give out bookmark contest activity kits in October, and then we have entry forums at the library on our website, and we publicize on social media as well. Categories of competition are K through second, third to fifth, sixth to eighth, and ninth to 12th grades. Temple City Library usually has great response to this contest. This year, we had around 230 entries, which is about a 38% increase from last year. That includes 125 entries in the third to fifth grade category, and 51 entries in the sixth to eighth grade category. And I'm sure being back in our beautiful new library building has something to do with that increase. So the criteria for judging the contest includes originality, creativity, and neatness. We had about five judges, including members of the Friends of the Library, Peggy Ko from the city, and a few library staff members. They were excellent entries in all categories, but the, I have to say that the sixth to eighth grade category was, had the highest number of outstanding entries. I just want to add that we greatly appreciate those students who participate in this contest, and the support we have from the Friends of the Library, who purchased the majority of our prizes, and of course, the City Council, everybody, all of you, for helping us honor our winners tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Go up and, and then we can take a picture all together. Okay. Well, welcome, all of you. Congratulations. All right. For our kindergarten through second grade winners, we have Jayden Lee, and he was our first-place winner. Jayden, if you'll come up and step this. And then, Jayden, if you don't mind standing up there. Thank you. We have Adele Tang. She is our second-place winner in the kindergarten to second grade. Thank you, Brian. You might want to stay there, Brian. Congratulations. Erin Lee, she's our third-place winner, kindergarten to second grade category. Over here, Erin. Thank you. Congratulations. In our third through fifth grade category, we have Victoria Wayne. Is Victoria?
I'll do she can.
Okay. So we have Victoria's certificate. Aristin Zhang, and he is our second-place winner in third through fifth grade category. Congratulations. And Sharice Lee, she is third-place winner in our third through fifth grade category. And now, our sixth through eighth grade category, we have Melanie Zhang. She is our first-place winner. Serena Wong, second-place winner, sixth through eighth grade category. Congratulations. Alexis Lam, third-place winner, sixth through eighth grade category. Not Alexis, not here.
Yeah.
And Carissa Zhang, first-place winner, ninth through 12th grade category. Are the two of you related? Nope? Nope? Okay. Same last name. I was wondering if you were siblings.
They're all, they're siblings.
Oh, okay. Congratulations to all of you. Council, do you want to come up and take a picture with her?
Yeah. In the library. Yeah. Definitely, in the library.
Three girls in the back, move over just a way, one.
How about our librarian?
There we go. Librarian coming in. Hold your certificate in between. There you go, right there. Perfect. And, yeah.
Yeah, those are the ones that did.
All right. Here we go. I hate to ask, but do they feel comfortable taking off their masks for 10 seconds, or no? Yes, or no? I don't want to talk to you anything you don't want to do. You're new in the room. I just want to see. Nobody breathe. Here we go. One, two, and, look over here, sweetie. Mayor, move over just a tiny bit. There you go, right there. Good. Thank you. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
How can we never have a discussion for the lights?
Thank you, parents, for bringing them out this evening also.
And pastors.
Moving on, we move to item six, public comments on items not listed on the agenda. Do we have anyone?
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Seeing this cuteness is just reminding me of what I get to look forward to in a few weeks with the Royal Court Play Day Contest.
All right.
First graders. So the Royal Court Play Day Contest is currently going on. It's open to all first graders residing within Temple City District and within the Temple City Unified School District boundary. So you have to reside within those areas. The application deadline is January 9th, and they're available online. It's an online forum, really easy, camelliafestival.org. And there's also applications if you have groups that want to walk in the parade, operate carnival booths, and if you're a business who would like to support the Camellia Festival, that's also available online through a sponsorship or getting a parade program at. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Don, what is the date of the Camellia Festival this year?
Oh, that's kind of important, isn't it? Thank you. Mark your calendar. February 24th, 25th, and 26th are normal last full weekend in February. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Anybody have questions? Okay. All right. Any other speakers? Seeing none, we move to item seven, the consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussions. Do we have any?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any objections?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor, councilmember Chavers?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Man?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. All right. Item nine, unfinished business, none. New business. Item 10, permanent local housing allocation residential accessibility modification program guidelines. City Council has requested to review the proposed guidelines for the city's residential accessibility modifications program, and we have Community Development Director and Associate Planner, Adam, with us. Adam's going.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, members of the audience. Tonight, I'm going to give a very quick background on the permanent local housing allocation. This was approved by Senate Bill Two in 2017. It instituted a $75 recording fee on all real estate transactions. In 2001, the City Council heard items of possible programs that PLHA funds could be used on, and decided on a, an accessibility modifications program that's limited to lower-income owner-occupied households, and also being a member of the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust. So tonight before you, the PLHA program guidelines, there isn't much guidance on these, so the only thing, the, the PLHA program stated regarding this type of program, that it needs to be, the participants need to be lower-income, and also that the, the dwellings need to be owner-occupied. So staff has come up with some program guidelines that are based on the city's existing home improvement program. We have named it the Residential Accessibility Modifications Program, acronym RAMP. And tonight, we are going to be discussing kind of the three key differences between the RAMP program and the city's home improvement program, priority, eligible improvements, and then also the maximum grant amount. So staff is recommending a kind of tiered system, kind of based on our small business grant program that we have, where we kind of focused on individuals that need the improvements most, and then, so we've come up with this point system. If you're, the owner is 65 years of age or older, if they have a physical disability, they get a, a point. If they're extremely low-income household, they get three points. Low-income household, two, and moderate-income household would be one point. And then also, we believe that the ones that have not received any type of home improvement program assistance in the past should have more points, be put higher up on the list. And then ones that have received assistance between the last six and 10 years, they get two points, and then within the last five years, get one point. So priority, the recommendation is that we would receive applications or interest forms throughout the year, and January 31st would be the cutoff date. And staff and the city's housing consultant would rank the applicants by points, using the tiered system, or, yeah. The highest number of points would be eight points, and then those individuals would be assisted first. We would do random selection for each tier in February, March, and then begin assisting households shortly after that. In alternative, the-
Mayor Sternquist, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Adam, so have we already been receiving applications, then?
No.
Okay. So, because, so there's applications received throughout the year, which I'm assuming is next year.
Correct.
But the selection is going to be January 31st, so-
That would be the cutoff date.
So that went?
The cutoff date? This could be, this could be adjusted, but this was just kind of our thinking, because-
Cutoff date for accepting applications, or?
Right. For the first year, we could modify it slightly, since we're starting late.
Okay. So basically, so if I understand this correctly, we're going to receive applications for January, and that's it?
Correct. I mean, for the first year, we could modify it slightly, since we are starting later in the year.
So maybe we'll push it out a little bit, depending on how many applicants we get?
Correct.
And that'll be the discretion of the city manager, or how's that going to work?
So we can come back to you, this is just looking at that, we can, we can push out that date, because the timelines that we have in terms of, in terms of funding and what we have to put out the door, we can, we can push out that date. That's, and, and enough time to advertise the program and do some other things as well.
Yeah. That was my only concern, is it, are we going to be able to publicize it sufficiently for those who are in need of this in that one, one-month period, or should?
No, that's, that's reasonable. We can, we can, we, there's no statutory timeline to set that out, so we could, I would suggest that probably March 31st is being the date for the cutoffs, and see if we can do about a month of publicizing, and then see two months of receiving the applications and going from there.
Yeah. I was, I was just going to suggest, when we bring this back to you in January for final action, we'll, we'll create a series. The, the one thing we don't know is how long it's going to take for LACDA to approve the guidelines. So we'll say, we'll come up with a program, like within two months of the LACDA approving the guidelines, we'll do such-and-such, and then a month after that. So for the first year, it'll be a bit more flexible, depending on LACDA.
Okay. Thank you.
May I just, so, so the fact that it's written here, application received throughout the year is not really corrected? We're going to modify that?
Well, for, for the first year, we're, it's going to be different, but the general, this is, the guidelines are for the general rule for every year after that. So for the initial year, we're going to be collecting applications for the first few months, and then we're going to make a decision on who receives it. The second year, the third year, the fourth year, the fifth year, we will be collecting applications throughout that period. An alternative approach would be like our home improvement program. We could do a first-come, first-served basis. If that were recommended by the council, staff would recommend some changes regarding the eligibility requirements for that. So we've, we've been in discussion with the city's housing consultant, and they've come up with some estimates on various improvements as far as accessibility modifications. So we have mobility ramps, providing, you know, if they have stairs going to the front door from the driveway, modifying the kitchen cabinets, countertops, electrical outlets, enlarging an existing opening or interior doorway, widening a restroom, replacing the existing toilet with the American With Disabilities Act toilet, ADA toilet, I believe that's higher in, or slightly higher than a regular toilet, and then also installing grab bars. Some other improvements here would be modifying the, an existing bathtub with a walk-in shower, or they have walk-in bathtubs that have kind of a swinging door, grab bar, grab bar installation, lowering light fixtures or switches, and replacing doorknobs with handles, and stairlift. And then, we would also want to provide some flexibility. If someone has a, either they come up with some different improvements that we didn't think of, as far as they're improving accessibility, then those would be eligible.
So I have a real quick question.
Yes.
So, this is not an exhaustive list by any means. This is just a, kind of a example of things that could be eligible-
Correct.
-under this program, yet we're also going to provide some discretion to our city manager to look at additional improvements that may be requested on these applications.
Correct.
And who, who chooses the contractor to do this work? Does, do we, the program, or does it homeowner? How does that work?
So the city's housing consultant works with various contractors in the area, so we do provide a list for homeowners, because sometimes they don't know where to start, or who to reach out to, but the homeowners are, they can provide the, the work write-up to the, any contractor that they, if they know a contractor, or find one online, or-
Kind of similar to what we did with the Habitat for Humanity, wasn't it? Is this kind of similar to that, where?
Habitat for Humanity was a little different. That was a sweat, they call it the sweat, sweat equity program, so-
No, I know, but I mean, as far as the contractors that were used.
For the Habitat, that-
Didn't we have a, we had, I thought we had a list of contractors, or we could provide them with contractors who would do the work.
Not for Habitat for Humanity? Is that?
Is that the one I'm thinking of? Which is the one where we did the improvements, like a few years ago, we did some improvements of homes, like, kind of similar. I remember we-
I know the one you mean.
Remember we went down to, over by In-N-Out hamburger, the person we did? And we did a whole bunch of improvements, and what program was that? I thought that was Habitat.
That was the Habitat for Humanity.
That was Habitat.
Yeah, that's right.
And it was the Handyman-
Right. Something like that.
Program.
Yeah. That, that's usually done by the Habitat for Humanity, and they have volunteers in the area, and also the owner's supposed to participate in.
But for things like this, I would think that you'd want to get a licensed contractor, especially we're going to be putting concrete ramps and replacing things, so, so we'll have a list for them, or things like that?
Yes.
But, but they can also go out and get their own.
Correct.
But shouldn't we make sure that, or is there going to be some restrictions in there, like these contractors have to be licensed and bonded and things like that?
Yes.
That'll all be part of the program?
Yes.
Okay.
And usually, like our home improvement program, if we, we get a certain number of bids, and the owner gets their own friend that's a contractor, get a bid from them, but their bid is a lot higher than how the CDBG program works, is that you have to pay, the owner would have to pay the difference between the lowest bid and the, whatever bid that they end up selecting.
Thank you.
And we've, yes?
I had a question. How does this, the actual selection process take place? Because, you know, the first one up to bat could eat up a heck of a lot of, of, of the budget.
So-
How does that work?
So we're recommending, based on the improvements, and I have an example here, of, we're recommending $40,000 for the grant amount, so that could do-
As a max?
Yes. We would want to leave some flexibility in there, in case there's an extreme situation or something comes up during construction. We don't want to exactly hold it to that $40,000 amount, but that would be kind of a general amount.
In the first year, that $40,000 will lead up a significant portion.
Yeah. Basically, you could do, we could do three, three orders.
Yeah, you might get three or four.
Three or four at the most, yeah. Yeah, it's better than none.
Yeah. Mayor, I have, I have a follow-up question to that, actually. Not that necessarily advocating this, but do we, I assume these work would need building permits, inspection, and all that, right? And there's a number of fees that might apply. Do we currently collect fees on home improvement programs that the city administered?
Yes.
I mean-
So is that included in the $40,000, then, or?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, that comes out.
Okay. Maybe it's two people.
No, it's in, it's in the 40. So, so when you say they get a maximum of 40, that's improvements and fees and costs, all inclusive? Yeah, so, got a budget, right?
So, based on a $40,000 maximum grant amount, you could get, for the first year, we would have anywhere from two to three households assisted, and this is if they use the maximum amount, or near the maximum amount. And then year two, the, the funding is slightly higher, 130,000, so that would assist anywhere from three to four households.
So, so Adam, those numbers on page eight are different from the numbers on page two, so, because it seems on page two, it's, first year, it's 100, am I reading it wrong? It's 100, about 124,000?
You're correct. So this budget here is just the construction. Our housing consultant, typically, you would include 20% of the expenditures.
Oh, okay. So we got some costs on there.
Correct.
Now, do we anticipate after year two that that goes up more, or we don't know at this point?
We don't know. I think it's all based on the number of transactions that are recorded where that fee is collected at the county.
Well, I can tell you right now, I try to avoid that $75 fee for my clients every time I go to record something. You know, it's funny, because this, this thing went into effect, what, 2017, and a lot of people were upset about it, and there's a lot of exclusions, too, for this. So not everybody, not every trans, not every real estate transaction warrants a $75 fee. In fact, very few actually do. Most, like if you were to sell your home, or have your home passed, you don't pay the $75. So, could be a bigger program, but they have a lot of exemptions, so.
Scott, I have just a quick question regarding the walk-in shower and walk-in bathtub. Do you need to have both options? And the reason I say that is just from experience with, you know, two parents that needed taking care of. The walk-in bathtub seems, seemed to not have been as useful as the walk-in shower, and yet there's a savings of $6,000. I, I know my aunt next door, who lived next door, also had a walk-in tub put in, and there were so many problems with it, and this was pretty recent, that she went to, went and paid herself to have a walk-in shower done in her second bathtub, I'm, I mean bathroom. So I'm just, you know, wondering if, you know, we can maybe look at that, because I think it sounds really good, and you see the commercials, oh, it's so nice, a walk-in, you know, or a walk-in bathtub, but the seats are very small, the tubs are smaller. It just seems that it's so much easier with putting someone that needs help in a shower chair, or a shower wheelchair. It's just a thought.
Yeah. Typically, with this program, and the CDBG program, a lot of these changes are kind of up to the applicant, the person who's applying for the most part, but if this is an item that the council doesn't want to include in their program, then we can specifically remove it from the, we can exclude it from the program.
Yeah. Well, I'm just wondering if maybe staff can look into that a little bit more, and, and, you know, see if we know some people recently, other than what I've mentioned, to see if that really, you know, is a way to go. I mean, it is a savings, and I just think that the bathtub is a lot less useful than the walk-in shower. I don't know.
Okay.
I know even at the care facilities where my aunt currently is, all the rooms have walk-in showers. They don't have walk-in tubs anymore.
Okay.
And just a real follow-up to that. So, when looking at this, I was thinking, boy, these are, these prices seem to be a little high. Is there, I mean, are, is there going to be any competitive bidding? I mean, what if you can get some contractor to do a walk-in shower, a good walk-in shower for less than 12,000? I mean, how does that going to work out?
Yeah. No, these, these were just to give the council an idea for, if you gave someone $40,000 in a, in a grant, how, what, what could they get for their, if they can get it at a cheaper price, then yeah, that, that's going to be better. And they do have to get multiple bids for each of their projects.
So, so some, so these could certainly be less?
Yes.
All right.
Mayor Sternquist, if I could also ask a question? Regarding the criteria for assistance, does, if someone receives, say, CDBG loan, or, or some kind of a- or, or some kind of a program from the city, does that count against them in the criteria?
So based on the, the tiered system that we created, you would get more points if you've never been assisted before.
So CDBG would count as...
Yes.
A type of assistance?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So we give you an example based on the numbers that we got from our housing consultant doing a bathtub, replacing it with a shower, twelve thousand dollars, replacing a toilet, replacing doorknobs with handles, doing some kitchen modifications and also widening a doorway. That would all be under, under forty thousand, the maximum grant amount. So just to give you an idea on what kind of improvements could be done for a forty thousand dollar grant. And there would be no fiscal impact for this, for this program. They're all reimbursed through the PLHA funds that we will, that we will be receiving through LA-CDAs, similar to our CDBG program. So staff's recommending that the council to discuss and provide any feedback regarding the priorities, the priority, the tiered system, or doing first come, first served, eligible improvements and the maximum grant amount. And we will bring it back to the city council on January third with the resolution to adopt the guidelines.
Adam, on the, the maximum grant amount, where it says twelve thousand, it says one bathroom tub replaced. That would be replaced with a walk-in shower though, right?
Correct.
Not, you're not replacing a tub with a walk-in tub with that amount?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else, Adam?
No, that's it.
All right. Do we have any questions from any council member?
Yeah, I have one more. Can you also clarify, what exactly does the consultant do versus what we, what our role is in-house in the administration of this program?
The consultant works with the applicant. So the applicant usually fills out a basic interest form, how many people are in the household, their annual household income. Consultant will go out to the site, do a walkthrough and talk with the, well, this is speaking for the CD, our CDBG program. So we have a loan and a grant program for that. And so they'll kind of give priority to improvement or talk with the owner on what kind of improvements they're looking to do. And if the consultant sees that the roof is in really bad shape, then she would try to push them to do those types of improvements first over doing something that was more cosmetic improvements.
So would that same thing apply in this case?
Correct.
So, so the consultant would actually recommend the type of accessibility improvements for each applicant?
Yeah, they could, I'm assuming they'll go over all of the ones that are eligible and then the owner would select which ones that, that they're interested in doing.
In addition to that as well, the other thing the consultant does that's really important for us is because of these federal funding, the amount of auditing we get both from LA-CDAs but also LA-CDAs through HUD is pretty extensive. So they actually go through an individual audit of our programs, which we've done recently and had no findings or anything else. So, and all the labor compliance components, similar to how we use TransTech for our project management services to ensure labor compliance and those things too. So it's not just that front end, it's also the middle and the back end from a compliance standpoint. Because LA-CDAs does essentially not do a full audit of us, but they use HUD guidelines then to audit us as well. And if we're not in compliance, then we would go through kind of standard procedures on how we would get funding in the future too. So that's why I, from, all the other things are important, but from my mind, from an administration standpoint, having that consultant provide that expertise in terms of the compliance measures is something that we don't have on the in-house side that we, that, that is valuable for us to continue moving with the program forward.
Scott, can I ask, how did staff come to the conclusion that it would be forty thousand dollars maximum? Because when I, I look at this and Adam just shared that it's up to the homeowner to decide from this menu as to what they would prefer. I'm just thinking human nature is like, let's pick the most expensive thing, maybe not the, the most necessary thing. But I mean, I'm just thinking about how many people as you age need accessibility for cleanliness to be able to use a, a walk-in shower at, say, twelve thousand dollars. Versus I know cabinets would be lovely if they were lower and you were in a wheelchair permanently. But I, you know, why wouldn't the amount be less and spread out more and encourage people to what, what they might not see they need right now? They possibly are going to need soon enough.
Yeah, that, that's certainly an option the council can go in. And that's actually what we did with the CDBG program. It's actually two programs. One is a larger loan and the other is a smaller grant. And so it allows us to kind of do both at the same time. But the budget for that program is much larger than this one. So what we did here is we kind of took the, the, the larger CDBG program, which is around, I think, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars, and used a similar amount here. But if the council wants to do, you know, smaller grants, that's totally within your purview. If, if there is some efficiency of economies, economies of efficiency, if we have less applicants and less projects because we have, there's a, there's a significant amount of time that's spent vetting the, each person's income. So there's a lot of documents that have to go through to make sure that, that they're, that they're viable. And then there's meeting with all the different contractors. And so the, it's quite, it's much more efficient to have less applicants. But this is, this is one of the choices you get to make.
What is the, are we using the same consultant for this program that we use for the CDBG?
Yes.
Same person?
Yes.
Or company, whatever?
Yes.
And what, is their fee the same?
I, I think it's the same, isn't it, under the...
And what is the fee?
They, they have hourly rates and, but the budget, maximum budget amount would be, it's based on expenditures. So if there's a hundred thousand dollars worth of expenditures, they could only get up to twenty thousand dollars.
And that's statutory within the HUD.
That's twenty percent.
Yeah, so that's statutory within the guidelines that HUD has in terms of what they can, what the compliance, if either, if it was in stat, in, if either if staff was doing it, if we had in-house staff, there would only be a certain percentage that we could be reimbursed for. In this case, we use the consultant for those, for those costs and those services. But those are capped in terms of the total program amount per the HUD guidelines.
And do they charge the twenty percent?
I haven't looked at the bills recently. We just, we, Adam and I, we just signed off on one contract recently. I can take a look at that, but I...
I mean, why wouldn't they?
Mrs. Bedrona's been with us for quite some time and has done a good job. And we've gone through several compliance and no issues have come up related to her billing or anything like that. So generally, I'm, you know, it's, it is a consultant who's looking to, you know, do their business. But generally in terms of what the services she's provided, seems like fair and reasonable.
And just one last point, if I may. I, I tend to agree with Mayor Sternquist on this issue regarding the amount. I mean, if you go to someone and say, well, you can go, we can give you up to forty thousand dollars, they may, they may take things that maybe they don't need. I would, I would rather see us spread it out a little bit more and, in a, in a way, kind of provide enough money to, to do what they can but not do things that they may not need, but hey, the money's there, we might as well do it. Because a hundred thousand dollars, I mean, we're talking two jobs, basically. And that, you know, I don't know how many applicants we're going to get, but it could be very competitive, of course.
Well, I think we'll get a lot.
If you reduce that down to obviously twenty thousand dollars, you're, you're looking at five at least, or four at least. So, I don't know. That, I guess that, that forty thousand isn't written in stone. That was just a number we kind of pulled out based on...
To your discretion.
Possible improvements they could do. But, and then with the competitive bidding, you know, I would hope that, you know, rather than finding somebody who could, who could create a walk-in shower for twelve thousand, maybe we could find somebody who can do just as good a job for ten thousand. I mean, that happens all the time in the construction industry, it seems like to me, so.
Part of our program guidelines here, and I think the overall idea behind it is that for the programs, who we're assisting, we're really looking towards like the age in place type homeowner, right, that's been here for a long time, hasn't, has some deferred maintenance on their property. And we don't want them moving. We want them aging in place and being with the community, you know, through, as, as, as they age and, and are with us for a long time. So that's kind of one of the ideas behind the program as well.
So Brian, are we looking, are you looking this evening just to get...
So the, the three things that are, the three things that Adam had mentioned, so the priority tiered program, the eligible, just general, general idea of the eligible improvements. And as the discussion has just happened right now, give us some direction on that maximum grant amount would be helpful for tonight. And then we can bring that back on, on the first meeting of January and as a consent calendar item. And we can, we will be off and running with the program.
So I guess, is everybody comfortable with the first one, which was, say again?
The tiered, the, the priority program versus the first come, first served.
Well, perhaps can we maybe go through the public comment before we...
That would be a good thing to do.
Yeah, yeah, I was going to say that. I think we've been opining, we've been opining before actually opening up.
Was there anyone else?
But I do have a question for staff that, that maybe the city manager can answer. I, I, you talk about reimbursement, maximum twenty percent. I, you know, some programs, it's, you know, not necessarily this one, actually there's a limitation on how much city staff can, can, can charge. And actually sometime we have to use consultants before we'll give you the full reimbursement, whereas you use your own staff. So I don't know if that is the case here. I think that may, if that is the case, may help us answer why we need to use a consultant.
Yeah, I don't believe we charge back any CDBG or, or similar programs like this staff cost to the program.
No.
Yeah, only so that twenty percent max is, only applies to consultants.
To the consultant cost, yes.
I think what seems, it seems high to me is, say you only have two applicants and two applicants at close to a hundred or eighty thousand dollars. And then, so two applicants with a big project and maybe a third to make up the difference. I don't know how much time is really, it takes to look at just a small amount, two, two houses plus. It just seems like a high number, twenty percent for that amount of money.
Mayor, just an observation, seems to me, what I remember is as soon as you have a program like this, you're not going to get just two applicants.
No, of course not. But you're only going to be able to possibly do two or three with that amount of money, no matter how many applicants you have.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, Mayor, if I could follow up on, on that one. Speaking of applicants, we know we have a long list of applicants on the CDBG loan side. Is there any overlap between those who've been waiting on the CDBG line for a while that would also qualify under this category?
Well, that, that may be something you want to discuss. And, and that's why we kind of put in the prioritization table. If someone hasn't received CDBG funds, then we would give them priority. There could be people waiting for a grant on the CDBG program who could instead use the accessibility modification program. If you allowed them to get both CDBG funds and PLHA funds at the same time, that would help reduce costs because the consultant would only be charging one of the projects or they would be only reviewing the papers once. So in, in that way, it would create a, an efficiency. But then you're giving someone forty thousand for the CDBG program, another twenty thousand or forty thousand here, you're talking about a very large project.
Yeah, but that, it, it kind of ties into Mayor Sternquist's idea of spreading the amount out. If, I think the optimal way is, there are some projects with both overlap. You can reduce the amount on this side. It synergizes with the CDBG side. And it also addresses the issue that we've been unable to solve, which is people who've been waiting on the CDBG list for quite a long time and saying, hey, when, when am I going to get, get there? And if they've already been on the list, I feel like, I guess I'm going into discussion now. It's, I feel like they should have priority since, you know, they've already been in the queue.
Could they eat up all of this money?
I think that's where it becomes situational, right? Like what, what are they applying for? And again, I don't mean to complicate the process, but is there a way that the, maybe this is where the consultant comes in and really finds like the optimal combination of, you know, maybe the original CDBG application can be modified to fit in with this and maybe that lowers the CDBG amount. I, I don't know. I, I think it, it just seems like it's very circumstantial though. But I, I didn't think about the, the, the same consultant, if it's administering the same project, that reduces the fees.
But when we come back in January, we can bring back some information about that and maybe start talking to the people who are higher on the CDBG list and see if they have, if they were interested in doing some accessibility modifications.
Would that take them off the CDBG list?
Depending on what improvements they needed, they may not be able to use the ramp funds, but they would only be able to use the CDBG funds. So for instance, if they had building and safety issues like the, a need for a new roof, that could not be funded through the ramp program. The ramp program is only for accessibility issues. But if they needed a new roof and a ramp to the front door, we could pay for the roof out of the CDBG program and the ramp out of the ramp program.
Okay.
We, where are we? Are we on panel?
Do you have any other questions, Tom?
No, no question. I was just, I'll wait till after.
So I'd like to open public comments. Do we have, do we have anyone? Okay, closed public comment. Any last comments from council?
Are, are we going to take each of these separately? It sounds like you need some guidance on three items, the priority, the eligible improvements and then the maximum grant amount.
Thank, yes, yes, council member.
So for me, I'm taking a look at the first one, which is the priority list, which is on page four. The question I had is, and I have really no problem with, with most of it, except it seems to me that this program was geared to help those who have accessibility problems because of some physical disability, yet we only give one point for that. I, I would think that we would want to give maybe two points for that. Because that's the whole idea, is that's what we're doing. We're trying to make this more accessible to those who, if they didn't have a physical disability, then they wouldn't need any of this, I would think. But that just, I'm just thinking maybe, you know, maybe adding a point for that because of the physical disability. But is this, is this given to us or do we make those decisions?
This is entirely within your purview to modify. This was just a staff recommendation to get the conversation started.
Other than that, I, I'm okay with the number point program that you provided. I don't know if anybody else has any issues with those things, but...
Anyone?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Casimiro Chavez's point. It's almost like if you don't have a...
To move that to a two?
Yeah.
I think, yeah. I think at least a two. Can we hear a three? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, go ahead. So next one is eligible improvements.
William, how about on that first one?
Eligible improvements. Where is that?
I think that makes, makes sense.
Okay, me too. So the second one is...
Is that the consensus of the council though?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
But are you still saying, Councilor, you want to make that three?
No, no, I was just joking. Two's, two's a good compromise. And we can always change it at any time if want, obviously, depending on what we get. But yeah, I think it should have at least a two at this point.
Thank you. So yeah, then the next one would be eligible improvements. And Councilmember Sternquist, or Mayor Sternquist, you had mentioned about the walk-in showers versus bathtubs. Do you want us to look at that issue? Is there anything else that the council would like us to look at?
So in other words, your argument would be, don't put, don't have one of the eligible improvements, a walk-in bathtub because they don't work anyway.
Well, I'm sure some will work and depends on the use and who's helping.
I've never seen, I don't know anybody who does have a walk-in bathtub.
I just don't...
Walk-in showers, but...
Did you put one in physically?
No, I, I was going to say, I, I mean, I haven't really practiced architecture for a long time, but I've never put in a walk-in shower. I mean, I'm very familiar with the American Disability Act and have done plenty of my work.
You mean the walk-in tub?
A walk-in tub, I've never put one in, because I'm not even sure it's in the ADA code. Um, so I, I actually, on this note, I was gonna say, um, you know, to, uh, Council Member Chavez's point, who is supposed to advise a homeowner on what's really needed? I was just wondering if we could also maybe come back with a list of part, priority improvements? Because you tend to, for example, when we do AD improvements, they always look for accessibility into the, into facility first. Um, so RAM would go first, because especially you have got limited budget.
You're talking about from the outside.
Yeah, yeah, you can't even get into your house, let alone, you know, use the tub, right? So, you know, setting a, a list of priorities, and also, that way, um, the, the housing consultant can have something to follow. And, and I agree with the mayor, uh, if we can do a shower, why are we doing a, a walk-in tub? Um, and, and since I'm talking, I'll just add one point. Um, I think a lot of the discussion had been on the cost of these improvements, and, and when I look at these numbers, they're just way, way higher than what I thought.
Thank you.
I think, um, and that, and I think I, I agree with some of the suggestions been made already, that we probably want to spread the, uh, wealth, so to speak, and, and we, in my opinion, I think we should lower the threshold so that more, uh, families can, can, can get help. Um, I mean, if the, because I really think that the numbers would, would go down quite a bit. Um, and on a note of, um, uh, housing consultant cost, I mean, there will be soft costs, and, you know, I don't think twenty percent is, it seems high, but because I'm in the business, it's actually, it's not high. I mean, it takes a lot of paperwork and, and to make it right. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor and council, just on, on the costs, and I, I know the city manager and, and staff will go back and look at the costs a bit, but, um, if we look on page five of the guidelines, uh, these projects are subject to California prevailing wage law, so you can figure about an extra thirty percent on labor, uh, for smaller projects like this. So your labor costs are going up significantly, even though the material costs are gonna be the same. So just keep that in mind when they come back with the costs in January, that they might not drop as far as you would hope they would. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so.
The last one's a maximum grant.
So with the eligibility improvements, uh, that's a great idea, come back with a list of priorities so that staff and Ms. Pedrona, our consulting, can have kind of a checklist to go down. We'll have that, and that, so, is that the consensus of the council as well? Great. Um, and I guess the last one is, I think we've heard, but, um, I, it would be helpful to maybe give us a range or a number that you're looking for with the, uh, maximum grant amount.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
I'm thinking somewhere between twenty and thirty.
Yeah.
Maybe twenty-five, maybe?
Twenty-five, I'm, I'm good with twenty-five. See what you can work with on that. I mean, I, I always had the, uh, we, we've had this discussion before on these other programs, and we've always had the idea, well, we want to spread it out a little bit more, if we can. And, um, you know, obviously, the homeowner, certainly, if they can get twenty-five thousand from us and maybe put in five of their own, they still got what they want. Uh, so that, plus, then we, we're able to spread that to other people as well. So I think it's a win-win situation. So.
Fernando, what amount, twenty-five?
Yeah, twenty, twenty-five makes sense.
Thousand?
Great. Great.
And we don't, we don't need any?
No, we don't need any action, we just needed, we needed that feedback from you, so that we can come back and finalize. Uh, Scott and Adam, I think we're good to go. So thank you, thank you, council.
It's a good program.
Yeah, no, great program, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And sorry, again, uh, once we got release of the funds from La Cada, that's why we come back to you now, so we know the program is real.
Took him a long time, twenty seventeen, five years ago. Wow.
And I think these are the programs we get excited about, because you actually get to see the money being used in your community and for the people who need it the most.
Yeah, and Adam and, Adam and Scott had done, oh, sorry.
Is the allocation based on some formula?
I, we, don't recall, I can come back with that.
No, I, I was just wondering, because the, the amount was different from like year one, two, or two.
Yeah, it was. Um, I, we can come back with that information.
Okay, that's.
Adam, thank you. Scott, thank you.
Right.
Okay, we move to item B, consideration of entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Historical Society of Temple City for use of facilities and availability to the public. The city council has requested to consider that with the Historical Society, and we are going to have our city manager, Brian Cook, give us some background.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, and members of the council. As you, as you know, the Historical Society, which runs both the museum and the hall, have been, uh, the museum has been renovated, and you've all had a chance to see that, but also the hall is back in use as well. As, as you may know, too, the city has used the hall in the past, paid the rental fees for that hall for things like State of the City, our employee holiday luncheon, not that we haven't had a great time in our community room, but it's a lot more comfortable in the hall that's right across the street. And also, too, we're, um, starting in January as well, we'll be having, uh, student tours again. So they, they tour city hall, uh, come to the council chambers, and it'll be wonderful for them to have a guided tour of actually the museum as well. So that brings everything together as part of our civic center. So, um, in, in having some discussions, um, and some feedback with the Historical Society, we'd like to consider coming back to you in January with an MOU from January first, twenty twenty-three, to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, with some conditions of some public benefit. One, eleven thousand dollars a year, that would have kind of some of the following conditions. One, that the museum be opened at least one day a week to the public without any charge to the public. Uh, two, up to ten tours a year for student groups, other civic organizations, and public organizations, free of charge. And then the other component, too, um, ten times a year that we would be able to use the club hall, which we have some of the, some of the pictures and the capacity to do civic events, uh, free of charge with all the facilities, including all the chairs and everything else that we usually have to rent out. So, um, it is not unusual for a city to, um, provide, provide some assistance to historical societies, but, um, in this case, we're getting both the benefit of actually using the facilities and having some conditions, uh, for public benefit for that. But there is a public benefit that's tied to assisting, uh, a historical society, especially with the great work that they've done with the museum in the last, uh, six to nine months. So with that, if you have any questions of me, I would come back and, uh, and, uh, and, uh, provide an MOU, uh, in the first meeting in January.
Okay, do we have any questions from council?
I have a question. Who would conduct the tours?
Uh, Mayor, Mayor, I've already talked, Mary would, uh, Mary from the, the Historical Society would conduct the tours, as a former teacher and curator.
Maybe we can get volunteer, uh, tour guides.
I was just wondering if there was a city cost attached to that, or any?
No, just, uh, we, usually staff and I will, uh, give the tour of this, of the city facilities, and then we just turn it right over to the Historical Society team to, uh, give the tour of now a curated and renovated museum.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, of course, uh, looking at the fiscal impact, this appeared to be a two-year MOU.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think the, yeah, the price is really reasonable, so.
Well, I was gonna say the same thing. Why don't, why don't we come to eleven thousand a year? Wouldn't it be make sense to just make it a twelve thousand a year?
I'm good with that.
With the thousand dollars a month, I mean.
Yeah, that makes sense, that makes awesome.
We're gonna give you eight hundred and sixty-six dollars a month, so.
You know what, Tom, when Brian and I were speaking, one of the things that we did was we looked at, we looked at it as an ambassador program also, and so I had him look at the amount that we gave the Australian students. So we based it basically on that, but it, I'm happy to do twelve thousand if.
I, I have no problem with it, I think it's still a good deal.
Okay.
It's a great deal.
And if it's not after two years, then we revise it.
I feel like we're gonna complain.
Do you guys mind if we do that? We haven't done it yet, so.
So, any other questions, Mayor Proton? Nope? Okay, I'd like to open public comment. Any, um, Donna?
Good evening, I'm Donna Georgino, and I am, let me take this off for now. I'm the Vice President of the Historical Society of Temple City, and I'm joined tonight by Don Taren, who is our treasurer, and Mary Sneed, who is our museum curator. And, uh, we'd like to thank you, Mayor, and city council members and city staff for this opportunity to share Temple City's history with the residents of Temple City. Um, I think it's a great way to celebrate our second one hundred years of existence, which we will do in twenty twenty-three. Um, I've lived in Temple City for over sixty years, and I, every day I discover something new about the city. There's such a rich and significant history in this community, and I think people, as we're able to share it, are gonna be really pleased to find out what role Temple City has played in the development of Southern California. Um, also, I wanted to do a little bit of a commercial. Um, the museum is, as, um, your city manager mentioned, it is open one day a week, uh, the second Sunday of every month from eleven to two.
One day a month.
A month.
Did I say one day, what did I say, one day?
A week.
Okay, one day a month, second Sunday of the month, um, from eleven to two. And our, uh, next, uh, day of being open will be January eighth, and, uh, following the museum being open, we will have our general membership meeting, which you are all welcome to attend. Um, and we are going to be installing our new officers at that time. Um, we would like to be open more than one day a week, and that's what we're working on right now. Oh, I keep saying that. We'd like to be open more than one day a week, too. Um, so, uh, we're looking for docents. If anybody's interested in being a docent, um, please contact the museum or contact Mary Sneed directly. She's going to be our, our lead person. Um, also, um, if you have Facebook, make sure you like our page. Every day, we post a historical photo of Temple City, and, uh, there's a lot of really great stuff in there if you haven't been doing it. So please like our page and invite your friends to like our page. And finally, if you aren't a member of the Historical Society of Temple City, we invite you to join and become a member, and to become involved in preserving the history of Temple City. So thank you very much. We're very excited about this, as you could tell.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Mary?
Pardon my voice, I'm one of the many in the room getting over a cold. Um, just let you know, we are, um, as a former fourth grade teacher, California history is big on my, my agenda, and, uh, Temple City's history is part of that also. So that kind of guided what we did in the museum. We are working with the district, um, to see if we can arrange buses like we do for the musical, where we shuttle classes back and forth. Um, museum can't handle a hundred and twenty fourth graders at once, we can certainly handle one class at a time. And so, um, third and fourth grade curriculum actually is really related to what we have in the museum. So we're, we're going to be working with the schools and see if we can arrange some kind of a bus system to, okay, today is Mrs. So-and-so's, you know, it's the fourth grade from Cloverly, we're gonna shuttle them a class at a time up there. So, um, we really, we really, really appreciate this support, this kind of support. Um, when I heard about it, I, I started crying. Um, the renovation of the museum really was a group effort. Um, and we've had some really good feedback. We had our first, uh, Sunday hours a couple of weeks ago, and people were, one of the families that came, came because of what Don has been, uh, posting on Facebook. Said, oh, I saw it on Facebook, I thought I'd come check it out, even if it was raining. Uh, but, um, we've gotten really good feedback, and, uh, we wanted this to be, really be a gift to Temple City. Temple, I, even though I live in County Arcadia, I grew up right down the street here. And, um, Temple City's a pretty special place, and we really wanted this to be a gift back to the city for their hundredth anniversary. And, uh, so this kind of support from all of you is so greatly appreciated. Uh, it's just beyond something that we could dream of, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay, going to close public comment. Do we have any final comments or questions from council members?
Just real quick, um, you know, we, I had the pleasure of, uh, with Peggy and, and Jillian, we, we took our youth committee to the Homestead Museum, and we actually were given a private tour by Paul Speciri. And, um, and, you know, the kids, I think, were just amazed by a lot of the stuff they really weren't, didn't know about, about Temple City. And so I think this is a, a great thing, and, and I agree with you, Mary, that history is so important, and, and to have something like this, and, in our own city, and, and I think get the youth more involved in, in knowing about it, uh, I think it's a good thing all the way around. And so, um, appreciate all the work that you guys have been doing, and, and I think this is a, a partnership that's a long time in coming, and I look forward to next year when we're hopefully working, I think, with the Homestead Museum and planning for that hundred year anniversary, so.
Tom, what, what supports that?
The Homestead Museum?
Do you know?
Um, you know, it's run actually by the City of Industry.
Is it?
Yeah, they, I think they support it. Um, actually, one of their council members was there the day we were there. And, um, yeah, it's, I think they get a lot, some of their money there, and then, and I'm sure they get donations, and they have, they have a gift, gift shop there, and I don't know.
Remember when we were doing the, uh, the bust of Walter Temple on the corner?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, a lot of us went down and, and got that same tour.
I think we all have taken that tour, didn't we?
They gave us the nice book, table book.
With the table book, yeah. You know, if you haven't been to the Homestead Museum, it's an amazing place, especially right now, because they have it all decorated for the holidays. And, um, I mean, that's where Walter Temple lived.
And the granddaughter is now buried there.
Yeah, yeah, and they have the mausoleum there. Um, but yeah, it's a good place. But, you know, but, but our museum is, is, is nice, too, but it, because it's centered straight on, on Temple City. Of course, they're with the Workman family and Baldwin, all that kind of stuff. It's good, it's a good partnership to have, so, good.
So Tom, would you like to make a motion and then change that amount to twelve thousand dollars?
Sure, I'll make a motion, that, well, I think we're just recommending that you bring that back.
Just direction.
Just direction?
Direction with the amount, too, would be helpful, just so we have it on the record.
Okay, well, I would, I think you've heard what we've said, so.
So, we're okay?
Back, back in first meeting in January with formal MOU and then amount of twelve thousand dollars.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, very excited for this.
Well, it hasn't been approved yet. It will.
All right, so we move to item eleven, update from our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, and members of the council. Just to let, just as a reminder, uh, for the Christmas holiday, city hall will be closed on Friday, December twenty-third, and Monday, December twenty-sixth, uh, for Christmas Eve, uh, and, uh, for the federal holiday of, for the federal recognition of, uh, Christmas on the twenty-sixth. Um, thank you to all the team.
What about New Year's, huh?
Uh, New Year's will be the, uh.
The New Year's is on Sunday.
The New Year's is on Sunday, so we will be closed on January second, that Monday.
But we're open?
On the third.
On the Friday before then.
Yes.
Brian, when is parking relaxed?
Parking is relaxed, um, through the sixth, I believe.
Sixth?
Let me, let me double, let me double check, and I'll double check.
Whatever that Sunday is, I think.
Yes.
It's nice to have that leeway to remind people.
Yes. Um, also, two, um, as I noted to you, I will be participating in some meetings related to our.
Oh, it ends January third.
January third, sorry.
January third, and when does city hall open back up, the second?
No, January third.
January third.
The third.
Yes.
So when will we start publicizing again that it's gonna close or stop?
Uh, are you talking about the?
The parking?
We'll, we'll start sending out nixels, uh, this week.
Okay, just wanna make sure there's enough time for.
You know, if I remember in the past, we kind of had a, I've had a gentleman's agreement that maybe the first day not be out there actively ticketing people. I'm wondering if we could pass that little, I mean.
Not, not formally, because it's not on the agenda.
I mean, we, I think we've talked about that before, where, you know, and, and the next, the, the next day, we've got, you know, a hundred tickets that, uh, people
next, the next day, we've got, you know, a hundred tickets that people don't, aren't too happy about, but.
I'll just say that that's within the enforcement discretion of the city manager, and I'm sure he'll take it under advisement.
Yeah, that's all we asked.
Okay.
Also, too, again, thank you to the team for all winter long of all the events that happened, they did a great job, and Mr. Matsumoto is doing good with his little baby boy and says hello, he'll be back on the twenty-seventh.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, update from our city attorney, Greg.
Sure, just two quick legislative updates. One bill that was passed this year and signed by the governor was Assembly Bill twenty-two thirty-four. Those of you who sort of are up on planning matters might remember the Permit Streamlining Act, which says that for certain types of applications, the staff has different limited timeframes in which to review them and turn them around, or else they're deemed approved and they can move forward. Well, what Assembly Bill twenty-two thirty-four does, it applies the same rationale or the same principles to a post-approval permit, so things like grading permits, building permits, demolition permits. The city staff will have fifteen days to determine whether those permits, applications are complete, and then if they're complete, they'll have thirty days for smaller projects, sixty days for larger projects, to turn around and work through the, the permit application and either grant a permit or, or demand, you know, changes. This only applies to residential projects. This is another bill that was backed by the BIA to make it easier to get residential projects through, so not a huge change for you as the council, fairly big change for your building department, though. The second one, Assembly Bill two thousand eleven, allows.
May I ask a question?
Sure, yes, sir.
So, that only applies to plan check for building permits, so for zoning jurisdiction entitlement, that?
Does, does not apply. That's all covered by the old Permit Streamlining Act. This is just, once you get your conditional use permit, your zone change, whatever it is that either planning director or your commission or yourselves, when you grant the main permits, and then they come back with the, as you said, sort of the plan check, the building permit applications, the, the implementation activities, those are covered by the new bill.
Can, can I ask a follow-up to that? How, how does the, do we know how our current rate of plan check response compares to what the legislation is asking us to do, just generally?
Yeah, so I, I meet weekly with the building staff to go over all the applications that are in review right now. Our building consultant, TransTech, within their MOU, within their contract, they're supposed to review standard-sized projects within ten business days, and that, for the most part, is what happens, ninety-nine percent of the time. Larger projects, like a large mixed-use project, something like that, often will take longer, sometimes up to three weeks or maybe even four, but in those cases, the architects are usually expecting it to be about a month to get their plans reviewed. So the, really, the, the push for us will be making sure that if we know it's a bigger project, that we make sure that we're responding to them within fifteen days, whether it's complete or not.
Okay, thank, thank you. And, and also, I can't remember if two-two-three-four was the one that had stipulations based on units, number of units?
Yes, twenty-five units or smaller is the thirty days, twenty-six units or larger is the sixty days.
So, does that apply to, I mean, we have a mixed-use project going on that has, you know, a lot of units, so does this apply to future projects that would have housing units within a mixed-use application? 'Cause I would presume that might maybe take longer.
Yes, yeah.
So it would apply to that?
Yes, it would apply to the project on Las Tunas, for instance.
I see, okay. And, and Mr. Remers and I have talked about this, and we're trying to figure out between us and TransTech and staff, how it, it will be, it won't be an insurmountable challenge, but it's going to be a challenge internally to deal with that, so we'll, and we don't have a slew of those, of those types of projects coming in down the pike and compared to other agencies around the county, and, and including the county, so it's one of the things we're gonna have to work through over the next few months.
Okay, thank you, that's good to know.
All right, and the second bill is Assembly Bill two thousand eleven, which for one-hundred percent affordable housing projects in commercial zones and mixed-income housing projects on commercial corridors, if the project developers are willing to comply with prevailing wage law requirements, they can build by right on land that was otherwise zoned for commercial. So, we don't expect huge changes in Temple City, but it is something to watch out for, and because it's by right, it's something that will be tough to review. Go ahead, Brian. Oh, I thought you were gonna jump in.
No, go ahead.
Okay, all done.
Mayor Sternquist, I forgot two things on my report, I apologize. First, we are gonna be ramping up, I've talked to Captain Reyes, we are going to be wrapping up our Citizens on Patrol program and Citizens Academy program as well to get some more of our Citizens on Patrol. Van is, Van is probably, is gonna be one of the folks who are, is working on that. We do have four right now that do patrol both Duarte and Temple City, but that's pretty with limited hours, so we're gonna see how many more folks we can get for Citizens on Patrol. And as you know, and it's public information, congratulations to Mr. Remers, the entire team Planning Commission, and thank you to the council, our housing element has now been certified by the State of California, so a big accomplishment on their part. This, according, talking to my colleagues around the state, and I know Mr. Remers' colleagues around in the community development world, this was probably the hardest and most difficult certification process with the state for a housing element in recent memory, so great work to them, and a lot of back and forth and dialogue with the state, and we've moved forward with the programs that are on the housing element, so thank you, and thank you for your support. Sorry, thank you, Mayor Sternquist.
Thank you. All right, that's it, Greg, also for you. Okay, we move to item fourteen, council item separate from the city manager's regular agenda.
No, we forgot to add.
Wait a minute.
Add hoc or standing committee meetings.
Are there any? Nope, okay, then, items separate from the city manager's regular agenda, anyone? Tom?
No, just happy holidays to everyone, stay safe and healthy out there, still got a few bugs flying around in the air, right? Just a few, but hopefully the schools are doing well. I know that a lot of the young, young kids and stuff are, have been susceptible to the stuff that's going around now, so, yeah, happy holidays and feel good, good, we're looking forward to next year, be a good year. We've been saying that every year, though. It has been getting better, all right, thank you.
Okay, council member, Viscara?
I sidetracked you. I'm trying to think. I really don't have anything significant to, to comment on, just happy holidays to everybody.
That's significant enough.
Yeah.
Um, council member, you?
I'll say happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and, and all that good stuff, Happy Hanukkah.
Um, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, same thing, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, but I do, I do wanna put Mr. Cook on the spot again here, it's my favorite, favorite part of the council meeting. But just in general, as, as we all know, that we have a new sheriffs for, for the county, I think it would be helpful if you can maybe report back to council at next meeting to see whether that may lead to any changes as it relates specifically to us and Temple Station. I know our contract hasn't changed, but of course, there's, anyone who follows the news and understands sort of the, the dynamics of, of the sheriff change, there's bound to be certain impacts that we just may not know about yet, and of course, we're always concerned about, you know, crime in our city, especially, you know, recent burglaries that have made the news, but I, I always like to say, hey, let's, let's respond by using data, using facts, and I know Captain has been very helpful and, and has been a great partner with, with us in, in working with that, and as well as, again, a shout-out to our dedicated team, including Mr. Debbie Van Lamb here, for, for really keeping us safe throughout the, the year. But I just, I think the more, the better equipped we, we are about the, the data and what we can do, I think, you know, our residents are very engaged on that matter, so whatever we can do in the, in the coming year to kind of build on the programs that we already have, like you mentioned, Citizens on Patrol, Citizen Academy, but also looking at how we can maybe think about new things for our Neighborhood Watch.
Yes, sir.
There's new, new topics, new things that can help empower residents to do, do their part in collaboration with, with Temple Station to make our city safer, so.
Do we have a Neighborhood Watch going in January?
The, the normal schedule for Neighborhood Watch will be kicking in, starting in January, we'll have that scheduled out for the council. And to Mayor, to Mayor Protem's point, I won't be able to do the meet and greet with the new sheriff tomorrow, but I, I will be meeting with my colleagues, some of who are on the Oversight Trust Fund, excuse me, oh, Liability Trust Fund, and the new five-year agreement is coming up with the county as well for the sheriff's contract, so some of the things, and, and it'll be, it'll be important for me to hear some of the council's feedback as well in terms of some of the both liability, but also some of the stat, as Mayor Protem's alluding to, what's the sheriff doing in terms of ensuring the staffing levels that should be at each of these stations are there, and what's their program to move forward with that, and how can that be reflected in that contract as well, and it's something I'm gonna be calling, talking to my colleagues about as well from the administration side, but also making sure I'm expressing what you're looking for from the policy side as well.
Okay, great.
Is anybody going to that meet and greet?
I can't, I would love to, but I can't tomorrow.
There was, there was a bunch of conflicts on that one, so I'm sure he will, I'm sure the new sheriff will have plenty more opportunities through contract cities and elsewhere.
Well, for those who have a regular job, it's kinda tough to go to a morning.
It was, it was a tough time, but, well, I'm sure they'll have more, sir.
It's in Lakewood, too, right?
Yeah, it's in Lakewood, yeah.
Not only that, they picked a golf day.
They picked a golf day, even worse.
I'm sure there'll be more, plenty of opportunities.
Brian, would you mind sharing with the council and the public the email that Sandra Croxton sent to me regarding the two deputies that are going to be assigned to Temple for the unincorporated area, because it does affect us also.
So, very briefly, the way that the contract is assigned, that each area, each city has their own, we contract out for specific deputies and everything else, the unincorporated is, is treated somewhat similarly, but they don't have the same level of service that we do. The supervisor has provided funding for two additional deputies in the unincorporated areas which do surround Temple City, so we do have crime that happens in and around our borders, so anything that's happening that's improving both on our bordering cities and in the unincorporated area is helpful to public safety efforts, both regionally but also locally, so April, who's the, similar to Van on the unincorporated side, who's one of the lead deputies for the unincorporated areas that surround, and it's a big area of the unincorporated, but does surround a lot of Temple City, will have some additional resources for the first time in a while, as well with two additional deputies, I believe for one year at least as a pilot, so, which will be helpful.
And she allocated a million dollars for the unincorporated areas to help, in her district, not just Temple City.
Right, in, in, in the unincorporated areas, there's some additional resources that are being deployed because crime does not know, does not know borders, so anything that's improving in crime surrounding Temple City helps Temple City.
But my understanding is we got done of that million for Temple City?
No, we did, that, that wasn't, that, that additional overtime was not towards Temple City specifically.
But I'm, I'm not sure that's quite correct, because when I spoke to Sandra, she shared with me, and she is the county, what is her, her new title now, is County Services, or?
Uh, she's the Public Safety Deputy for Supervisor Marjorie.
She shared with me that, we had a long conversation about public safety and, in particular Temple City, and she shared with me that the monies that we would be allocated from that pot, even though it is the unincorporated area, it goes to the station.
That's correct.
And if it is not used, that we would not lose it, because there was some issues regarding staffing, so.
Well, it goes to the station, but they can't use it for Temple City programs, they can only use it for unincorporated.
For the unincorporated, yes.
That's what I'm saying, it didn't really help us much. I guess, in a way, I guess as Brian said, if it helps the border cities, it, by, I guess, helps us to some.
Well, I mean, in, in, if they see sheriff patrols in the unincorporated, which we're bordered by also, I mean, I, I think, I'm hopeful that these burglars will think twice about extending into.
Well, hopefully they'll catch them before they come into Temple City.
True. But I think any increase in funding to help support the sheriff station, no matter incorporated or unincorporated, we're all in this together, so I think it's, it's helpful. Okay, um, let's see, Tom, did you?
No, I already did, I already went.
Everybody else?
Everybody went.
Yes? Okay, I just wanna share something, I don't wanna say, well, it is on a happy note, maybe not the nicest thing to hear, but I was on the sanitation meeting, and good news is that I didn't realize that the sanitation district tests wastewater to see how the COVID vaccine is.
Oh, yeah.
Progressing or declining.
That's been on the radio.
They can tell that, they can actually tell from that, how, but.
They can tell, I, I mean, I was really surprised, but anyway, the good news is, is that it is such a low percentage compared to what it was even six months ago, so that's really good news for all of us, that this virus is dwindling down, even though there's still sick people out there. But anyway, that's all, just wanna wish everyone Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, everything that you celebrate, and look forward to the new year. I'm thrilled that our Historical Society is, hopefully at the next meeting, going to have some funding to help support all the work that you do for the community. So, get out to the museum if you haven't seen it, Scott and Adam Leff, thank you again, and we're adjourned, thank you.